Hello everyone. You're listening to a pre-recorded program of Environmental Soup through the facilities of Trent Radio. I will also post this on Twitch and YouTube. My name is Rob Oribelt 808A, O-I-B-E-L-T, um, on Twitch. All Environmental Soup, uh, if you're looking on, uh, YouTube. Uh, I'm back from break from recording through the facilities of Trent Radio. I have also moved to a different city, Kingston. I do maintain our connections to Peterborough and Dordel. So I will continue to cover the city of Peterborough. And, uh, environmental issues. In Ontario, Canada, as well. I hope that you had a good, uh, start to 2024. And on today's episode, I will talk about the city of Peterborough's decision to not purchase an electric vehicle. Uh, COP28 and a review of what's happening on the Environmental Registry, if time permits. I'll have additional content on YouTube and Twitch, including past programs. And thoughts on other environmental and social issues. I do believe that issues are connected and I want and I want to, uh, inform people about, um, opportunities to engage as well. Uh, the first topic is the decision not to purchase an electric vehicle. I'll start with the fact that the last city council declared a climate emergency on September 23rd, 2019. And I wrote an article in a local newspaper. Called "Council Declares Climate Emergency." Since then, there has been major gains. Such as an organic waste collection. Uh, but there have also been setbacks, such as when councils voted down the most climate-friendly bike infrastructure. And was, uh, posed to was in a position to defund, uh, bus infrastructure. I wrote about that in, uh, oh, I guess I should go to the article, the first article I wrote. Um, so Peterborough declares a climate emergency. There were some, uh, students that spoke. About their experiences, some of their fears for the future. One, one student, uh, talked about, uh, an extreme drought in, uh, Chile. And this was all before the, uh, direction of, uh, 2022. So that impacted, uh, the city of Peterborough and the surrounding areas. Uh, they significantly, um, I'm sure that many of you remember that. Um, this was passed unanimously by the previous, uh, council. And most of the councils. Most of the current council was on the previous council. So then I will go to the second article, uh, which I wrote, uh, "A Climate Emergency With The Side Of Medium Transit." There was a report that said 87% of citywide, oh, this was in 2021? And still before the direction, um, caused by, uh, extreme level event. Um, so 87% of citywide trips involved a call. There was a despite the fact that Peterborough declared the climate emergency, recent decisions during city Council General Committee July meetings demonstrate that the climate emergency and public consultations are not being taken seriously. And that council is divided. Originally, only two of the six recommendations city staff made, uh, were approved. Which were designed to address overcrowding and improve services. At the time, uh, Council Kim Zippel said, "Tonight's city of Peterborough voted to run old buses back to the last century, limiting its growth of transit limits economic growth and ability to address the current crisis." So frustrating. Uh, council did, did end up, uh, funding transits, uh, uh, but it took a lot of, uh, public, public pressure, um, and the formation of, um, a transit liaison group. Which, uh, councils, councils didn't want to listen to at first. Uh, Councilor Kami Akapo said, "Peterborough residents, I hope you're paying attention to what just happened at General Committee." Uh, "The future of transit in all community." Uh, there's a lot of, uh, references to financial costs. And I'm going into like the background, uh, the background is relevant to, uh, the electric vehicles. Because it's related to climate change. Uh, there's, uh, a request for 160 kilometers of bike lanes. Instead, 80 kilometers were approved. 160 was recommended by the Peterborough Environmental Advisory Committee. And that 16,500 tons of carbon dioxide would be saved compared to 9,350 tons for the 80 kilometer option. Jean Gregg said that bike is supportive of increased bike infrastructure and that the city is moving in the right direction. There was concern about, uh, commitment to the cycling community going forward. She also said that there were funding opportunities from the federal government, which would make the 160 kilometer option more possible. So that's, uh, that, that article. Oh, uh, there was also a decision to, uh, heat the park surface with fossil fuels. This was, uh, reported by Joel Kovak of Peterborough Xeno. And the article, "City Council Rejects Going Back To Drive Board On People's Old Park." So the concrete would have, uh, and does have, uh, a heating system which has a gas-fired boil. Yeah, and then I'm just gonna see where I am. Oh, I think I'm at, uh, Peterborough City Council, I'm at the next article, so I'll go to. Looks like I'm missed that, um. Well, there was an article called, "Peterborough City Council Decides Not To Buy A 600-4,000 Electric Waste Water Truck After All." I'm just going to turn it open on my other screen. Thought I had that, that one up, but, um. So, "Council, uh, Andrew Bemel said that it's an unproven, uh, technology." Uh, I, later on, I will, uh, talk about how it's, it is proven. Uh, "The waitlist for diesel truck is 18 months, so nearly two years compared to three months for delivery, uh, for an electric truck." Um, "Apparently, it was nine-two in favor of buying an electric truck on December 4th." With, uh, Andrew Bemel and Dave Harky, um, not in favor. Um, but on the general, but on the, when it take, take time for the city council, it lost 6 to 4. Um, with Council Barry Baldwin not voting. Council Real, Dave Harky, Andrew Bemel, Jeff Leal, Don Vasiadis, and Council Leslie Ponnell, Worgenster, Portus, uh, Council Kevin DeGueye, Matt Qualley, Alex Wilk, and Joy Luchica all in favor of the purchase. Um, one of the quotes in the article, uh, says, "Cities or the landscapes where climate emergency will be won or lost." Uh, and that was from Joy Luchica, um. And, uh, another quote, "In all cities, we declare climate emergency and we can take a step towards action around that." Um, Dave Harky, uh, said he wasn't on the previous council that had declared a climate emergency. And made a point about showing that. There was a warning that repairs could be pricey, um. And yeah, those are the main, uh, points of the article. Yeah, um, so those are the main points of that, that article, uh, there was also. But I, I do want to make a point about the, um, not rely, uh, electric vehicles not being reliable. Um, electric vehicles have been around since, uh, 1800s. And, uh, core models have, um, like the Nissan Leaf, that was, uh, 2010, I believe. So 13 years, 13 years of purely electric vehicles, uh, there was a lot of municipalities investing in them. But I, I have, I have articles, uh, that I can talk about, so that I can show. Oh, yes, it's important to look at life cycle. Uh, Analysis Of Electric Vehicles. This is, uh, "Electric Vehicles From Life Cycle And Social Economy Perspectives." Uh, "Transport And Environment Monitoring Mechanism Report." And then 57. On page, oh, I'm trying to get there. Page 57. So the conclusion says, uh, "The majority of, um, oh, life cycle analysis show that uh, battery electric vehicles have lower life cycle greenhouse gas emissions than internal combustion engine vehicles." "The emissions associated with raw materials are 1.3 to 2 times higher than, uh, internal combustion active vehicles. And is more than offset by low per kilometer use stage emissions." And then based on European, uh, uh, electricity grid. They were 17 to 30% lower than similar diesel and petrol vehicles, uh, in terms of, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. I will go back to. I, I will say that like electric vehicles are not, uh, this, the solution to climate change. Uh, it's important to, to recognize that, uh, but there, there was, there was a important, um, element there to, uh, recognize that going electric will reduce climate emissions. Oh, um, "Zero emissions vehicle or battle for the environment and your health." Uh, this is from the Government of Canada. "Onload transportation accounts for 20% of Canada's total greenhouse gas emissions." "Zero, uh, emissions vehicles produce less emissions overall um, over their lifetime than gas vehicles." Oh, here's the, I found the article. It was just out of place, uh, did I say anything? Okay, I think I said everything that I wanted to say. Um, one point mentioned by, uh, Council Leslie Ponnell was, um, uh, a fire risk. Uh, there is a article from the Guardian, "Do Electric Calls Pools A Greater Fire Risk Than Petrol Or Diesel Calls?" Um, so those, uh, oh, uh, who is it by? It is by Jasper Jolly, uh, November, uh, 2023. When a fire, this is from the article, "When a fire went through coal park in Luton Airport last month, set off a round of speculation that an electric vehicle was the blame. The theory was quickly doused by the Bedford Shaw Fire Service, which said the blaze appeared to have started by, started in a diesel car." And then, uh, there was an export cited in this article. "There's no reason to think that EVs are more likely to go up in flames. Several exports have said, indeed, the opposite appears to be true." And then they referenced, uh, Colin Wackle, "EVs are just as much much less likely to set on fire than the petrol equipment, said Colin Wackle, the head of transport at the Energy and Climate Intelligence Unit Think Tank." Australia's Department of Defence uh, funded EV fire safe, uh, and it found that there was a 0.0012% chance of "Passengal electric vehicle battery catching fire compared with a 0.1% chance for an internal combustion, uh, engine calls." So yeah, that's the uh, it's very unlikely that an electric car will catch on fire. And then I'm just looking at the the reports, uh, that recommended made, met recommendations. And it said that the, um, the truck would save, uh, the waste water collection truck would save, uh, $57,375 in, um, fuel and maintenance cost. And it is a truck that, uh, is idles a lot, so those, um, costs, environmental costs that should be, uh, considered as well, um. So the, the fuel is included in that cost, um. But idling causes, uh, emissions as well. Oh, uh, here's a quote, uh, "This unit is a prime candidate for Peterborough's fourth full wheel electric heavy duty truck." And this is from the, um, General Committee, uh, Council Report. "It will eliminate non-idle times with onboard power onboard or to charge in one tools. It also has redundancy if needed with a backup generator option, limiting the need to leave a job uh, site in an emergency situation when available power is low." Yep, and then, let's see. Oh, I'll play, uh, what one of the councils said.
11D14, Council Hickey, please.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. This one I will speak to. For people that know me, I, I'm not sold on a pure electric vehicle yet. There isn't, that I know of, a, uh, history of a car life in the electrical field, electrified vehicles. A test that I always ask myself is, if this was my money, would I buy this? And the answer would be, no, not at almost 23 times the cost.
Okay, um, so there was a claim made there was a claim made that they will not test it, um. And there was a driver, I know that this is a, a, um, passenger vehicle, uh, and it's not quite the same thing um, as a industrial, industrial vehicle. But, uh, there was an article in Lethbridge Now. Um, said, "Eventual driver sets world record for fewest electric child, child rolls to drive across Canada." "Zetlau and Kamo, Kamo man Eric Park left St. John's Newfoundland on July 25th and over the course of seven days and 7,133 kilometers, made just 18 children stops. They arrived on August 1st." So you can drive across Canada in an electric vehicle. Uh, and then there was an article in McLean's. Uh, "I took my EV out on 15,000 kilometer transcontinental road trip. Here's why I'll do it again." Uh, it, it was from Quebec to Porto, Faro, Mexico. And then a level three charger available at, uh, some highways, rest stops, public parking lots, city central, and commercial areas, uh, could charge, uh, in 25 minutes. Uh, there, there might be a, uh, lifestyle change. Um, but I, I think, uh, if we're going to be serious about meeting the climate emergency, then we should, um, make some of those changes. So my show is half an hour, uh, so I don't have time to go over uh, the entire uh, segment. uh segment. Uh, but I did cover uh a little bit about COP twenty eight. But I'll make a uh I'll show another uh clip from Council Real.
The truck and the two and a half or three times the cost of an electric vehicle as opposed to a diesel. Um, this week inundated with emails and phone calls like most of us. Uh, I thought it would be taken up with the budget, but I think this caused a small firestorm of an electric vehicle probably on the heels of the budget. But I I I will not be supporting the purchase of this EV for several reasons. There's an unproven track record for this truck. There is no plan going forward to electrify the fleet, and what I mean by that, if the city of Peterborough was going to get into electrifying their vehicles. I think there needs to be a wholesome debate, a staff bringing forward what that's going to look like, and I'm talking about electrifying all our vehicles and especially transit. Um, and I don't see a plan there. This is like a one-off. We bought a couple of hybrid vehicles and now we're going to buy this vehicle here. Um, there's no funding from either the federal or provincial government on this, um, there is a, um, I I think they're giving a, um C H S T or something that's here, but here here's the federal and provincial government even not pointing up to saying we would like the city and we'll go partner with you, um, to electrify your vehicles, um. Again, I said that the the cost itself, um, almost uh two thirds or or three times the amount of just a diesel one. Um, and there's, if you needed to repair the one until you bought the diesel one, you would have plenty of money in the kitty um to keep the one on the road and working order until the new one come in. Really funny, a couple of things that happened this week. The federal government comes out and they are not going to meet their target dates of greenhouse gas. Over in Dubai, they are looking at twenty fifty to even come near close and they've they've actually, the president now is an OPEC sheik.
Okay, um. So, I I find it um troubling that whenever a, one level of government um fails to meet their climate obligations, that uh and um another level of government uses it as an excuse to, um not take climate action. So I I just wanted to make that uh common, um. The, and it is true that the federal government is not on track um to meet their uh targets, um. The, um. Uh, let's see. The environmental uh commissioner um. Uh, yeah, the Environmental Commissioner of Canada, um, released the reports. And this was, oh, oh, uh, November, this is in an article in November seventh, twenty twenty three. Um. Um, and then, uh, I did make a video about uh the COP twenty eight president uh previously. Uh, so, um, I won't go into uh too much in that. Uh, but the president uh claimed that there was no science indicating that those are phase out of fossil fuels. Is needed to strip global heating to one point five degrees Celsius, and this is in uh another golden uh newspaper article, COP twenty eight president says that there was no science behind demands for phase out of fossil fuels. Um. And um Professor David King, uh Climate Crisis Advisory Group, and former UK Chief Scientific Advisor said, it's incredibly concerning and surprising to hear COP twenty eight president defend the use of fossil fuels. It is undeniable that that to limit global warming to one point five degrees Celsius, we must all rapidly reduce carbon emissions and phase out the use of fossil fuels by twenty thirty five at the latest. The tournament is unimaginable future for humanity. Um. Let's see, uh, I don't know if I'm going to be able to cover uh the results of uh COP twenty eight, uh I'll quickly look at them. Um. So some of the key announcements was that there was a rapid decarbonization of the energy system. Um. There was global renewable and energy efficiency pledge, a goal to triple the world's installed renewable energy generation capacity to at least eleven thousand uh big gigawatts by twenty thirty, and collectively double the average annual rate of energy efficiency improvements from around two percent to over four percent every year until twenty thirty. Um, and then those uh several levels, uh including uh nuclear uh increased nuclear, which I do. I I do uh have um reservations about, um. Those are twenty thirty uh climate solutions and implementation roadmap. Um, and this can be found at, um summary of global climate action at COP twenty eight. I went to the COP twenty eight uh website. Um. And clicked on a news list uh called COP twenty eight agreement signals beginning of the end of the fossil fuel era. Uh, and I found that through that uh method. Um. Yeah, so I didn't get to the environmental industry today, um. I will aim to get it it out. Um. The following week and any notices that will uh expire um before the broadcast of uh environmental soup uh will be posted on YouTube. Uh, thank you for listening and enjoy the rest of, uh. I I hope the rest of your twenty twenty four goes well, and I'll be back uh next week. Oh, uh, I want to stop recording.